Well, thank everyone for coming to tonight's town council meeting. If everyone could please stay and at least in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe Mr. Wilson this evening. Give implication.
Let's pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to gather together. We ask that you be with us tonight, that you guide our minds with your spirit, lead us to peace. Guide us as we make decisions affecting this town. Let us be in your will in all things and everything we do. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. You can be seated. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Liz, if you could do roll call. Here.
Here.
Daniel Brett.
Here.
Eric.
Here.
We by the draw.
While some.
Here.
Michael Wood. We do have a two.
We have two sets of minutes to approve the council meeting from September sixteenth. Any additions, corrections?
I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes from the September twenty or sixteenth town council meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Uh, we have minutes from an executive session on September twenty fourth.
I'll make a motion. We accept the executive session me- meeting minutes from September twenty fourth.
Second.
No motion and a second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Counsel, are there any special presentations this evening? That. Are there any? Before we go too far, are there any changes or corrections to the agendas?
The actions six and eight. Six is resolution twenty twenty five dash twenty. I'm sorry, that's twenty twenty one and eight is twenty twenty five.
You'll have to. Repeat that when we get down there to it. Thank you. Okay, well, we'll jump back up to the consent agenda. I think there's eight items on the consent agenda. Any comments, concerns, changes, corrections? If not entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion. We accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. All business. We have ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero seven. Sheridan Public Library twenty twenty six budget appropriations. Think we've gone through this. We helped you. So I think everything should be. In order at this point. Any more discussion on this item? If not, uh, make a motion for the. Ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh seven.
I'll make a motion. We accept ordinance number twenty twenty five dash zero seven, the Sheridan Public Library twenty twenty six budget appropriations.
Second.
Have a motion and second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That one passes. Any other old business? Seeing none, we'll jump to new business. Um, fairly lengthy agendas. We'll try to. Not waste too much time on this. Um, ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh eight ordinance of the town of Sheridan. Indiana authorizing one or more series of taxable economic development tax increment revenue bonds. And approving and authorizing other actions and documents related thereto.
Mr. President, uh, this is the culmination of the long discussions and other approvals you made with the regarding bond agreement project. Uh, developers for it is going to construct between ten and twenty commercial building. On the fifty acre site that we previously identified in. Local RNC, PDC, Hope of hearing. So this is bond resolution that authorizes bonds that, um, that the economic development commission has recommended to use. Aggregate principle about nine eighty million dollars. Uh, and they are taxable bonds. It solely from the increment created by the project. So they are non-re分成 town. The town is not outwitted, uh, under this in any way. Uh, and if the increment is never created, it's that's purchaser of the bonds problem, which is also. Uh, the resolution also approves a variety of bond documents and financing documents that are currently in draft form and. Uh, submitted draft notes used packets, including a economic development agreements. A financing agreement. A pledge agreement by which the development commission is pledging, uh, the tip for the payment of funds. And a trust in venture. Uh, all of those will be be worked out in the form of our orders that you have. Uh, this requires either reading at two. Approval of this requires either reading at two separate meetings or unanimous waiver of the second meeting rule and adoption. And have any concerted questions. There's also a representative of the developer here impressive did ask them to feature just in case she had some questions.
Discussion. Does anyone have questions for the representative? Anybody wanna?
You look pretty thoroughly.
Anyone wanna consider suspending the rules? If so. Please make a motion. If not, make a motion to. Well, it would be for sure.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules, uh, ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero eight.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Um, we'd like to do a roll call vote.
Hey, you, you can do it just by the way, so we don't hear it now.
All right. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Rules are suspended.
We need to do any of these separately?
No.
I'll just do it all as one?
You can do the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty five dash oh eight does everything.
Okay. I'll make a motion. We accept ordinance number twenty twenty five dash zero eight, uh, as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ordinance passes. Ordinance twenty twenty five dash ten twenty twenty six budget form A. Is Mr. Higgins come to the, the microphone? My check it might get puts on.
Okay, I've done really well to avoid addressing the council for the last couple of months and to take a break. I'll take some time this evening because there's quite a bit to go over. So I gave you two handouts this evening. Uh, the second handout, which is the black and white copy of the DLGF report. This is nighttime reading for your, uh, education. It basically goes through parts of Senate enrolled act one. Specifically, and it's an abbreviated version of what was presented at the clerk's school back in August. Um, specifically about how Senate enrolled act one affects property tax bills for twenty twenty six. And primarily. In the fact that a lot of things that were credits before. So that would be adjustments in assessed value. Or, or I should say deductions. Things that were deductions for like, uh, low income over sixty two or veterans deductions are now credits. And those credits are applied to your tax bill after the circuit breaker. So they're dollar for dollar credit. So the tax bill is computed. Then the circuit breaker is applied and then after that number. Then the credits are taken off. So the end result of all of that change is that your circuit breaker. Will go up year over year. And so again, as I talk about that a little later, I just wanted you to be aware of how that impacts. And so I gave you that for just some late nighttime reading. Second thing I want to go over is this first page of this handout. That has the box at the top that talks about changes in assessed value from twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six. And again, Senate enrolled act one makes some changes, uh, to how assessed value is, is calculated. The biggest change, like I said, is on the tax bill, we took away the deductions that used to be there. Uh, secondly, we're changing the way the homestead credit works that we're phasing out the supplemental homestead credit. And building into a more, uh, realistic, uh, homestead credit to where by twenty thirty. Uh, a home will basically have one third or two thirds of its assessed value. Abated or forgiven, if you would. So properties will assess at roughly a third of their market value. Or two thirds of their market value, I should say. So what happens is the town's net assessed value for the town district. Last year was a hundred and sixty nine million dollars. Proposed twenty twenty six is two hundred and two million dollars. So an increase of almost nineteen percent. So the town's assessed value went up. In the town municipal tax exempt, which is the Ottinger parcels, uh, that are primarily ag land that are exempt from town taxes until such time it's developed. That assessed value you see went down almost seven percent. Again, Senate enrolled act one starts to make a change to assessed value for two percent property and ag property. Where in the past you had no deduction. So if you had ag land, it was so much an acre. And whatever that calculated, that's what your assessment was. Now in twenty twenty six, you get a six percent. Reduction of your assessed value through a credit. And so this ties fairly closely to that number with a seven percent reduction. In twenty twenty seven, that number will grow to twelve percent and it will adjust every year for the next six or next five years till you get to a third. Of the assessed value of two percent property or ag land will be abated, if you will, from, from taxation. And then the rural district, um, actually went down just a fraction of a percentage, just under a half a percent. Primarily because we have ag land that was getting the additional payment, but then some growth to the non-ag land that was there. The net result is the assessed value of the town of Sheridan goes from four hundred and fourteen million to four hundred and forty five million. Uh, over the course of the year, that's almost a seven and a half percent increase in assessed value. Typically, historically, an increase in assessed value with levies remaining relatively the same tax rates would go down. That's all going to change over the course of the next few years with. The full impact of Senate enrolled act one, but we can worry about that as we get into twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven and beyond. The state gave us a maximum growth cushion this year, uh, set arbitrarily by the legislature at four percent. So that will generate for us an additional eighty three thousand dollars in property tax revenues. That's the good news. The bad news is the assessed value changes that I talked about from Senate enrolled act one increases our circuit breaker loss, a hundred and forty two thousand dollars. So we have a net loss of about. Fifty six thousand dollars of tax revenue. So we're going to start out of the gate fifty six thousand dollars worse than we were. It's a forty three percent increase in the circuit breaker loss. It is not nearly as bad as other communities around the state. Uh, in part because Sheridan already had a relatively high. Tax rate for the rate inside of the town district of Sheridan. So we already had circuit breaker losses. There are some communities that find their circuit breakers are up over a thousand percent. Uh, because of the change in the credits. So we've contemplated that in our budget. We are going to propose, uh, as part of this budget, uh, an excess levy appeal, uh, for growth. The three-year growth factor of the town of Sheridan, including the old township, has outpaced the state's growth. Uh, and so we're eligible for an excess levy appeal. According to Senate enrolled act one, it's the last year that we'll be eligible for a growth appeal. Uh, that appeal that we think we're eligible for is a hundred and eighty eight thousand nine hundred and twenty one dollars. Um, that, those dollars will be dedicated to the MVH fund. And will be used primarily, almost exclusively for the. Ten-year chip and seal plan in the rural district, which has been estimated to cost about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars as an estimate. So that's the, the plan to, to take care of that. Again, it is the last chance we're going to have to increase our levy. Um, into the foreseeable future. So, uh, it would be more than prudent for us to take advantage of that. We're totaling, uh, proposing a total budget of thirteen million, one hundred and forty eight thousand dollars. Uh, that number will change between now and adoption because I have some fine tuning to do, um, to the general fund to get it into balance by. Going through the mathematical gymnastics on the twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six budget. Um, we are funding some things though that you need to be aware of. Uh, we have built into the budget a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget for remodeling this building. Uh, that to be paid not out of taxpayer dollars, but the proceeds from the sale of the utilities. We are funding, uh, proposed playground equipment acquisition for the playground out here of a little over a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Uh, again, that money is going to be paid for, um, or that. Will be paid for through a lease purchase financing and that lease purchase financing will be paid for out of the park impact fees. We have sufficient dollars in the park impact fees today. We have over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I just don't believe that it's in our best interest going into this environment to spend all of our cash. Because I know there'll be other improvements and that fund may be slow to replenish itself. So I think pacing that out over a four-year period. Uh, serves us best financially. Um, we anticipate and I've put into the budget, uh, pursuing a million dollar community crossings grant in twenty twenty six and matching that with two hundred thousand dollars of local funds. Again, contemplated within the budget that's being proposed. I've also included in the MVH fund, uh, a current, uh, acquisition in twenty twenty six of a skid steer loader and a trailer. Cost of about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Again, I'm proposing that be financed through a four-year lease program. Uh, and that be paid out of those funds. So we're not extinguishing cash that we're kind of making, making that work for us. Uh, we have substantially funded all of the increases that the department heads have requested. Uh, I say substantially all. Sometimes, uh, they had to hear the word no. Uh, and I think as we go into next week, they may hear a few more no's. Um, I say that. I say that lightly because there's a man sitting behind me with a gun. But, but we, we will deal with that and it is a workable budget. Um, we've anticipated some increase in health insurance cost. We'll be able to address, uh. The small surprise we got earlier today from the Hamilton County Drainage Board about assessing legal drains in the rural district. Uh, a public hearing to be held later this month. The increase in that drainage assessment is. Roughly sixty four hundred dollars. So in a thirteen million dollar budget, I don't think that we'll have a problem meeting that. It's just one of those surprises that came up at the last minute. I may be requesting between now and the, and the time that we meet on the twenty first. Would we consider salary adjustments for non-elected officials next year? That may, we very well may want to wait until July first. So we wait till after the legislative session meets so we could see if there's any surprises that our friends, uh, deliver to us about tweaks to Senate enrolled act one. Um, because I'm not sure. I think there are some good changes that are going to be made. But I anticipate there'll be some bad changes, uh, that will be made for us as well. Things to consider as we go into twenty twenty six. Um, we need to talk about or prepare for changes that happened in twenty twenty eight. Uh, to the elimination of local income taxes we now know it and how it gets replaced. Uh, right now, today, we're not eligible to vote for our own income tax. You have to be at least thirty five hundred in population. I think the twenty twenty census has us at about thirty one hundred.
You are working on.
But we're working on the recertification. Right.
Well, and the thirty one hundred was prior to real.
Yes, but when they go back to look, they're going to look at the last certification. So we need to take legal steps in order to make sure that we're now recognized. As the new town, uh, and that population, which puts us well over fifty two hundred. Which would give us the opportunity to then vote, uh, for any income tax that we might need to, uh, to bring up in that one point two percent. Um, I've talked to the department heads and I've talked to Mr. Patron about working on a multi-year capital plan. For the replacement of our rolling stock and other equipment that needs to be had. We're doing really well right now to fund that out of. Uh, the CCD funds, but as you'll see here in a minute, I've got some concern about where those funds go in the future. We need to talk about revenue enhancement. From non-property tax dollars because those are pretty much neutered for us going forward. Uh, so we're going to need to revisit some of the fees and other ways that the town, uh, collects money from other sources and need to be a little proactive about how we do that. Um, and I've, I've talked to, uh, before Dr. Monday and I've talked to the library director. About starting next year, some community-wide education about the impacts of. Senate enrolled act one and the changes that are going to be coming. Uh, because we've always talked in the past as terms of property tax rate. And we've based all of our analysis on rate year over year, and that's going to go out the door. Because what's going to happen over time is assessed values are going to shrink. So in order to get the same levy. We're going to have to increase rate and it's, you're going to pay a higher rate. On a lower assessed value. And then different levels of cap. So it's going to look different than anything we've ever talked about in the thirty five years that I've been doing this. Uh, so that's the highlight of the budget, uh, and the overview. I gave you a couple of other like sheets that follow and so I'll go through those very quickly. On the second sheet. I kind of do in the upper box, just an analysis of the circuit breaker loss and the levy growth. So as I mentioned earlier, we're getting an eighty three thousand dollar levy growth and a hundred and forty two thousand dollar additional hit to circuit breaker. So we start the year fifty nine thousand dollars, uh, off worse than we started. Uh, when we talk about twenty twenty eight and the lit revenues, uh, that we get local income tax right now, the certified shares. That Sheridan will get in twenty twenty six are estimated to be one point seven million dollars. In twenty twenty eight, that goes away. And we get to replace that with a local income tax of our own or at the request of the county depending on. Uh, where our population lies, but we don't have enough information to address how that gets made up. And how those dollars get distributed. State finally issued some preliminary, uh, indication of what their plan is. Uh, they did that last week. They put out a, a white paper, uh, with a caveat of saying, hey, the legislature is meeting here in a couple of months. So don't take this as gospel. It may change. I tend to agree that. So I haven't got into the, into the reading yet, uh, of that particular document. On the third page. I'm doing just an assessed value analysis between now and twenty thirty. Just so you can see what happens, uh, to the assessed value of a piece of property. Right now in twenty twenty five, a home that's a homestead that has a gross assessed value of two hundred thousand dollars. Has a homestead deduction and a supplemental homestead deduction and therefore has a net assessed value of ninety eight thousand eight hundred dollars. By the time you get to twenty thirty. The homestead deduction goes away. And all things being equal, the supplemental homestead deduction rises to sixty seven percent. Or a hundred and thirty four thousand eight hundred dollars. So that same house that assessed today at ninety eight thousand dollars in twenty thirty. Will assess for sixty six thousand dollars. It shrinks by a third. Great news if you're a homeowner. Not great news if you're trying to, to run a town. Non-residential homesteads, which is your ag and your secondary homes, uh, and whatnot, a two hundred thousand dollar property. Today would assess at two hundred thousand dollars. There's no deduction. That two hundred thousand dollar property in twenty thirty would have a sixty six thousand eight hundred dollar deduction. Be a hundred and thirty three thousand would be the assessed value. It shrinks by thirty three percent. So our assessed value between now and twenty thirty, all things being equal, if we fast forward at the clock, our assessed value would be a third lower. To raise the same money, we would have to increase our tax rates. Where we're at now, if we increase the tax rates. We would just increase the circuit breaker loss and it would be this self fulfilling prophecy. So there'll be growth between now and then. So the numbers will change, but the net result is a smaller assessed value. Why I say I'm concerned about that from the CCD. Why I say I'm concerned about that from the CCD fund is that's a rate-controlled fund. That's five cents on every hundred. So if we're generating a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars today, five years from now, we'll generate only sixty-seven percent of that. Because our assessed value will be smaller, lacking any growth or change in assessed value. The pages that follow are just the the form of the notice that was published by fun for tonight's public hearing. So I've given you five minutes and an awful lot of information to digest. But I tried to hit the highlights on the first page and I would be happy to enter and entertain any questions that you might have before you open your public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Higgins?
Yes, yes, sir. Go ahead, Jim.
On the first page, I don't know if six that much, but a hundred and eight thousand for next year, there is going to give you, if I had approval of contract for that tonight.
Yes.
Do I need to change that to provide for some sort of delayed financing?
No, no, because any financing that we do today in September or October now, most likely won't have a payment due until twenty twenty-six. So I need to make sure that it's in the budget because any financing we do would be subject to to the ability to pay, but our first payment wouldn't fall till twenty twenty-six. So rather than approve of financing, move through that process, get into next year and have to do an additional. I'm trying to avoid additional. So Community Crossings, all those things that we've talked about, this playground equipment, I've tried to push into this, this proposed budget. So and whether it's a hundred and eight thousand or a hundred and ten thousand or whatever, easily fits within the number.
Sure, we'll have questions.
I'm sure you will, especially between now. My, my intention is to meet with the department heads between now and next Monday to fine tune their budgets to make the final adjustments and then get you a budget book early next week with all of the detail, if you really want to get into the minutia of the budget. And then address any questions that come up on your adoption two weeks from tonight on the twenty-first. The other item that I, that is there for you though, to deal with tonight, and I'll just address it now so that when it comes up later, is the execution of a petition for the excess levy appeal. That form has to be filed by the twenty-first and it has to be filed by five o'clock. Part of that process and application is the approval of the council for the appeal. I can't wait until next, next meeting because it will be post the deadline. So I've given you a copy of the petition for your consideration this evening. With that, happy to address any questions that you have before you open your public hearing.
I think we are good right now. We'll open the public hearing.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. So it is six twenty-eight PM. Public hearing is now open. If there are anyone that would like to come up and ask any questions or comments regarding this. Parvin, come on up. He was, he had his hand up before you.
My name is Parvin Gillum, Sheridan, Indiana, and I appreciate Mr. Higgins sort of taking the time to write, I think, at least a somewhat thorough explanation of what's going on. I, I guess my question is, is more of a question than anything else is that when you talk about tax levies, and maybe you can answer this question, are you talking about, you know, I guess something that's always been, I think, a bit of a problem for Sheridan is, is it maintains one of the highest tax rates in Hamilton County. Are you suggesting that perhaps they might have to raise that even more?
No.
No.
Did you have a question off that break?
Oh, okay. Well, that was really what it was about. So that was, you know, that, I, I know you talked about the circuit breaker and how that might change things. But I, I guess I'm, my point is, is from an, you know, from an, I guess from an economic development standpoint, it, it becomes a little bit problematic where you're, you're having revenue shortfalls, but you really are not in a position to raise taxes without even, you know, presenting something that's even more difficult, like having the moniker of being the highest tax rate in Hamilton County. Thanks.
So part of having the highest tax rate in the county is, is for the Sheridan Town District is what we're talking about. And that's because it has one of the lower assessed values relative to the budget. And again, it's all mathematics. So in order to generate the same amount of money with a relatively confined assessed value, you have to tax at a higher rate. The maximum levy was allowed to grow four percent this year. The assessed value of the town grew nineteen percent. So what will happen is that in order to maintain relatively the same budget, a four percent growth of the pie, but the base grew by nineteen percent. Everybody's going to be paying a smaller piece into the, into the pie. And so what we should see is that tax rates go down. And given tax rates go down and assessed values are going down, taxpayers should be paying a lower piece and we just have more people contributing. It would be my explanation. So yes, I'm, I'm not saying we're going to levy more tax, but we've got growth that outpaces levy growth. And so we should see a lower rate and so proportionally, we should all be paying a little less. But great question.
Please come up, Ben.
So thank you for going through that, but that was very dense. And I can't imagine how dense the actual paper is. Is there somewhere as a resident that we can take the time to actually read through this information to digest it?
We'll post this exhibit once I get it up to time, please. The path to this particular meeting is on the agenda that's on the website and you will download it. You went down on the page.
Okay. I previously tried to download stuff from the website and it was on a SharePoint site that's not accessible to the public. I don't know if that was a overlooked issue or.
Well, that's called a help desk.
Fair. Okay.
Yeah, it was in the burger. We'll upload that and make sure you can download it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anyone else, please?
It's Jay. I have no idea what we talked about. But what I wanted to say was last meeting when the people were here about forty-seven, I met with them outside and they were impressed on how many people come to a meeting. I just thought I would let you know that it was impressive to them. So there you go. Apparently not many people come to a lot of.
Council advisors may offer, maybe we need to size up what Mr. Higgins presented. A lot of effort, my new directors, input, mediation at court, Mr. Higgins. But not be overlooked is, in fact, our chicanese program. Taking on ten miles of road every year, effectively hitting approximately ten percent of the view of this country to, to maintain those levels of surface. And we'll use the information you recently received from banning on the inventory and infrastructure to inform where those roads must be perceived attention. In addition to the one point two million dollar crossing project, that's two hundred thousand dollars of WIPRAC from us and a million dollars from the state. And again, we leave that inventory, banning, scoring form where that money is spent, small structures and things like that. And then certainly your department is reacting to changes in community operational needs. So this, this is the, and realizing it's measured budget, it's not long, the ceiling office is something that I think given next year is our first full year and reorganize down this budget, it's a higher respected budget and, and cost costs the same probably.
Thank you. Any other public comment for the public hearing? Seeing none, it is six thirty-five. I'm closing the public hearing. So that was our first reading of the ordinance and we will revisit this at our next meeting.
And Mr. Higgins, if I may, Mr. Higgins, you need the council to act on this, that, and that, correct?
Yes. Yes, this next item much. So next item, petition for excess levy appeal. Mr. Higgins pretty much explained that. Are there any other questions regarding that? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We accept the petition to appeal for an increase above the maximum levy.
Second.
Have a motion and second as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Next item is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash eleven and ordinance establishing chapter seventy-four of the town of Sheridan, Indiana Code of Ordinances Regulating Heavy Vehicle Traffic. Mr. Nicely.
This was created with the idea that two hundred thirty-sixth Street is going to receive quite a bit of truck traffic and construction on either side of the town. So with that in mind, we created this ordinance regulating heavy truck, truck traffic, meaning that traffic to anything with a gross vehicle weight, weight bringing less than twenty-six thousand, twenty-six thousand one would violate the ordinance. There are certain exceptions that includes emergency vehicles, traffic services, fire construction, farm equipment, inserted recreational vehicles, motorhomes and campers and of course, buses. So violation of this ordinance would come worth five hundred dollars. Just explaining what a gross vehicle weight bringing is, was a weight of an item of vehicle. My understanding that the police department scale it's way, it'd be vehicle. So we go off on what it parts type of that. Is there any questions that you may have?
Any questions on this? Chief, do you have any comments or concerns with how the?
No, I, it was submitted to the adjournments and I wrote that in there. So I think we're good.
How do we go about, if, if this passes, implementing signage?
Director Kirby spoke to NDOT, so they would be in charge of putting signage on thirty-one lines. So you have to get them to find it in the street. So NDOT would be responsible for the signage on thirty-one in town would be responsible for any signage reported in the town. We would have to show the purpose of the passage of the ordinance, NDOT, to put it aside.
So if this passes, is there a, a timeframe that has to be dormant?
As soon as the signs go up, we'll start reporting.
And should we notify any businesses around that area to give them a heads up? As a.
It actually also has to be advertised in the newspaper in the time you're describing it. Fine for violation.
Okay. Any concerns, Director Kirby? Any other comments?
Just a, just a clerical one. In the writing, it says ten thousand, it's spelled out ten thousand pounds, but then the number is twenty-six thousand. So yeah. That's it.
There's no other comments or concerns. Someone would like to make a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Would you like to waive the rule?
Oh, it is always. Would you like to waive the rules?
I'll make a motion. We suspend the rules.
Second.
Have a motion and second to suspend rules. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Rules are suspended. That will come out. Move the ordinance through.
I'll make a motion. We accept ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eleven regarding the heavy vehicle traffic on two hundred thirty-sixth Street.
Second.
Have a motion and a second as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Next up, we have Chief Stern with the professional services agreement. I'd say the name, but I would butcher that. So I'll let you. It's probably really easy, but tonight it's not looking easy.
Good evening, councilors. And on a brighter note, I have a couple of announcements to make prior to this proposal before you.
Thanks, Jim.
But this week's National Fire Prevention Week, so make sure you check your smoke detectors at home, make sure they work. Make sure you got the batteries, good batteries installed in them. The second thing I have that I wanted to mention before this proposal is on September twenty-fourth, the Sheridan Fire Department was awarded the twenty twenty-four physical year safer grant. And what that is, it's a matching grant between the town and FEMA. And it's one million, fifty-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. And this is for to hire three firefighter paramedics. And that's a shared cost between the town and FEMA over the next three years. The town would be responsible for twenty-five percent of their salaries and benefits for the first two years and sixty-five percent the third year. And when it all comes down to it, the net of the town for the grant is six hundred and eighty-four thousand, five hundred fifty-eight thousand and fourteen cents. So it's been on our bucket list there at the fire station to get awarded this grant and pretty pleased that we got it. So.
Congratulations.
And with me this evening, I have Chris Dragser with I always say wrong, Etika Group. And before you, as a scope of service and the fees for to find, get some data and some information on building a new fire department. We're in, we're in desperate need for a new fire department. Not today, not tomorrow, but down the road in a couple of years. It takes a lot of planning. It takes a lot of data to be gathered to, to know what we want and and to do the taxpayers' justice of what our needs are. So Chris is from Tipton County. He's an ex-fire chief. We worked together for a long time and I'll turn it over to you, Chris.
Okay.
Good evening, councilors. So you all have a copy of the proposal. Okay, so the project purpose is at a very high level to develop a conceptual site and ultimately a floor plan at a high level again for a new fire station for the Sheridan Fire Department. The effort will help guide and plan the future, the budgeting process in both short and long-term goals and make it more operationally effective and community responsive. So one of the things that is important to note is we really believe that, you know, to answer these questions, it's important to not only provide clarity to you, the councilors, but the taxpayers at the end of the day, and that they are very well aware of the process throughout. Oftentimes we get to the end of a project and people feel like they were not involved. They didn't have information upfront and throughout. So I think this proposal very definitely through the gains of a station committee that the chief would identify, would walk through that process. In your paperwork and the proposal there, there's four main tasks that we would be looking at. And starting out with would be a site analysis. Oftentimes a municipality already has a site or two in mind that they may want to turn into a municipal project like this. Sometimes they do not. Through the process, we talk about special needs assessment in your second task there. Going back to the stakeholders, we identify how many bays will the station have? Will this be a one or two-story building? Are we going to continue to have back-end bays or are we going to develop it out into a more modern opportunity with drive-through bays? So a lot of these things have to be answered so we can see what the site is going to be necessary and some of the infrastructure is going to be needed. A lot of times we run into a situation where a site's identified and it looks like a pretty good value. But then we see maybe a DNR flood plain is encroaching on it. So we have some things overlooked there. So we really just want to try to eliminate some of those things up front and make sure that the proposal that the chief, the dream of the department and the city is matching with the end. So you're not going backwards at the end. And finally, when we wrap it up, we'll end up with an evaluation and a formal recommendation of what we see as the objectives from the fire department and apply a cost analysis. And this will not be from Indiana or Midwest averages. We try to ascertain those from current projects. Indiana or Midwest averages, we try to ascertain those from current projects that we are either directly. Involved in or others that we're aware of, so. Again, uh, the chief mentioned this probably is not a project in a few months or maybe even a year from now. But when we do these short and long-term planning, you have to have some sense of the scope of the project in turn of, in terms of finances to obtain that, so. Um, this will. Definitely do it through a very systematic approach. And with that, do you have? Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? It's pretty. Pretty self-explanatory and Chief Stern has discussed this on not for quite a while now, so.
A lot of times, it seems like this is like the first step of formally kicking it off in terms of. You know, everybody has opinions, there's a lot of. What this person or that person wants, but it's really identifies the objective, so you can start. Getting a feel for what the cost of a project like this will cost.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
This in your budget, or is this something outside?
Jim, I had some money that I wanted to move around to for this project, and, um, I wasn't able to do so. Uh, Jim did say in an email that we could find the money if it was out of the council's desire, received for it.
There's money, the chief may not like where I'm gonna take it from.
We'll talk to him later this week.
There, there's money available for, for this, for this proposal, in, in this year's current.
I don't know where he's getting it from, but I think it's, I think it's needed. I think it's needed.
No, it's, it's needed and. Like you said, you, this is next year, but it takes a long time to plan all of these out and. And we've gotta start sooner than later, so I. I agree, this is needed and. If this is right fit for your department, then I back you on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, do we need to, we need to make a motion on this?
Yeah, and I, I prepared a special services agreement for this, your signature and this consideration of sending to approve the engagement.
Do you guys have any more questions or? I guess my only question is if we approve this tonight, when do they start?
When you start, sir? They approve it tonight? The project will probably take about six weeks, we're probably about four weeks out from beginning the process, and part of that will be with the chief and. Getting a team together, whoever the committee is going to be, so after that, I would anticipate probably four to six weeks to start and six weeks to complete it.
Okay. I don't have a free night, so I don't wanna be on that committee. Just putting that out there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anything assigned for this, but I.
Did you move this in my answer?
Got you. I didn't know if I lost it in this mess.
Resolution, you just make a motion, but I've got a contract.
Okay. Oh, you pronounced that.
Iticca, very simple.
Not tonight.
I'll make a motion, we accept the proposal from Itica for the. Exploration of a new fire department.
Second.
Second.
Wow, you all speak up on something good. I'll remember that. Have a motion and a second as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm not speaking anymore tonight.
Okay, you've done your share. I got you. You, you are kicked off, Mr. Stern. Um. Playground replacement. Playground equipment replacement at community center. Um, I'll start this off, I'll probably ask. Um, the vice president of the park board to, you might as well come on up with Mr. Kirby, but. I started attending the park board meetings, probably what, two or three meetings ago? And. Kinda give you guys a little direction, and you guys are itching to do something, and we have some failing playground equipment here and. My goal here was to help you guys give back to the community and with help with Mr. Higgins. There's a way and take it over, over.
You smell my friend.
Yeah, exactly, no, um, so the park board has been. Uh, meeting in this room and looking out and seeing some lacking, um, in our, um. In our park equipment, we had a, um. A person come by and review the park equipment, and they stated that there was some dangerous equipment and it needed to be replaced, um, and. Um, you know, I'm sure for all the people here that have been here long enough, uh, if you're an adult, you probably remember playing on that. Equipment as a kid, and so we wanted, we wanted to be able to create a safe environment for the kids of the town to come, um, and play, we're getting. Um, this building revamped and we wanted to also revamp the play equipment as well, so that was a, that was a goal of the park department and, and so. Um. I think that.
Working with the parks department or the parks board, we did, uh, we've had several meetings culminated in last Tuesday. A special meeting where the parks board voted, um, there was three quotes, they worked their way through all three quotes, there was a representative onsite. To work with the parks board and, uh, they determined, they made a vote last Tuesday. To accept the triple A quote, and Mr. Bosma has them, I'm sorry, I don't know what the, it was one oh seven.
That was, uh, oh seventy-nine, eight.
Okay, so that was the, uh, quote that the parks board accepted, they made it contingent upon funding, Mr. Higgins, I think he's already explained. His, his view of funding this, um, so. Just wanted to present that to the board and also let the public know that we will be removing this. Equipment out here as part of price reduction on this, we volunteered to do that demo ourselves to help bring down that cost. So when you see it disappear, please understand, this is gonna be two phases. Uh, phase number one is the equipment that they will have, and assuming it's, it's approved. Phase one will be equipment that they have in stock and that they can get in, then another ten or twelve weeks will come by, they'll come back to do phase two. So we will demo it, phase one will, will come very quickly, and then phase two probably is gonna be about ten to twelve weeks after that. So we will, we will be working on it, it's just gonna take us a little bit of time.
So, yeah, the goal, the goal was to have this, uh, by, uh, done and, and with your approval tonight, we can get this, uh, the phase one installed. Um, by the end of, by the end of the month, uh, there are two pieces of equipment, if you turn around and look at the, the, um, the little, um, the. Kind of X square up at the top middle, and then the round dome at the bottom, those are not stocked items and they would be, hopefully be able to be available. Prior to Christmas, uh, but, and so by the end of the year, um, but the rest of the things that you see in that. Layout as well as a four-bay swing set, um, would be available by the end of the month with an approval tonight.
Will they go ahead on phase one and do the mulch?
Yes, yes, yes.
This is a turnkey operation, I, this is, this is everything. We did agree that there might be a little bit of groundwork between phase one and phase two to help them, and again, to reduce costs. We will be more than happy to try to assist them in whatever minor. Necessities.
Do you have any questions?
Couple of things, so this applies to this project and the street department, uh, project. So any, the citizens of public work, you know, if you're building a fire station, it's the same, uh, same statute. So any public work between fifty thousand and now three hundred thousand, used to be a hundred fifty, they just raised it. Uh, you have to do on process re-quotes. Generally need to be open, public meeting, uh, and then you must accept the lowest responsive and responsible quota. We did exactly follow process here, but close enough, the resolution before you that is twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one. Uh, will document this, it needs to be chan, I'm gonna change it orally, if you've got it in your packet, I'm gonna make a couple of changes to it orally. Because I received additional information tonight that, that it didn't have previously. So first of all, there was, in the third recital clause, it says there were two quotes received, in fact, three were received. The missing one is Commercial Recreation Group LLC for a hundred nineteen thousand, hundred twenty-eight dollars. The high one, it's the highest one of three. The next recital clause, uh, needs to be clarified, the reason that low bid was rejected, low quote was rejected was because it did not include equipment. For children above ten.
Correct, yes.
Or something like that. So I, I cha-changed that recital clause here in my hand. To, rather than say they didn't include all labor materials, to, they didn't include equipment for children over ten years of age as requested. And that same change is made on section, section two of the resolution. Or this has signature copy, she'll have a clean cover page that reflects. What I just stated, uh, if you go forward to the document.
So will the motion need to have as amended in there?
I, I think you can just say as explained.
Okay. Any other questions, I'm pretty excited about this, this, this is something.
It's been a long time.
Long time, and this part, the playground gets used the most.
Yeah, well, and, and we were, uh, as a park board, we were very concerned with the, um, to the age ranges. And the low quote didn't include. The tweens and teens that would be using this park, it was more focused on the littles, and we wanted to make sure that this was a multi-age, um, access. Um, and especially the, what, the, one of the phase two, uh, pieces is a four, fourteen-foot. High climber with ropes and it's, it's gonna be really cool, so I think, I think the community kids will really enjoy it. Uh, we're putting in a, a couple of benches for parents to be there as well as we're having, if you notice on the left-hand side of that. Layout, there are, um, there're gonna be ADA ramps, so, um, you, there're gonna be ADA accessible areas. Uh, as well in that area, as well as the four bays, there's gonna be a special swing, uh, to meet ADA compliance, and so it will be accessible. For that as well, so we're excited about that.
Thank you both, any other questions for them? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept, uh, resolution twenty twenty-five dash two-one, uh, regarding. Playground equipment at the new community center park.
As, as explained.
As explained.
Second.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
President Knight.
Am I up next again?
Um.
American Water, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, next item up is Indiana American Water request to close Lamong Road.
Do we need to wait for him to?
No.
Um, this actually might be very quick, I received confirmation today that Mr. Workman from FA Wilhelm is here to answer any questions. Uh, they're withdrawing their request to close Lamong, that was my major concern, I talked to Chief Nielsen. We were both concerned about a complete closure of Lamong, so this morning I got written notification that they are withdrawing that request, so. If you just wanna come up and, and give a little briefing of your, your project, and, uh, that was my major concern, is the complete closure of Lamong. And I believe they're going to do it with flagging now, so it's a lot more acceptable to me. Uh, this is, uh, Mr. Workman with FA Wilhelm.
Yep, um, so most of our work will be. In an easement off the road, uh, we originally requested the requ, requested to shut the road down just so we can move our heavy equipment and pipe. Um, we can do that, I talked with, uh, Scott and American Water, we can do that by using flaggers when need be, so the road is stay open. Uh, we'll be out of the roadway, often easements. Doing our work, uh, the project starts at two hundred twenty-sixth and Lamong. And it will end at Indiana American Water Treatment Plant on the north side of town.
When does it start?
Uh, we are pending, uh, approval of permits, as soon as the permits are approved, we will start moving in, uh, at the lift station. Uh, on two hundred twenty-sixth street.
So what's the path that you're going north on Lamong to?
Yes, we're going north on Lamong, all the way past two hundred thirty-sixth street, across the fields, uh, to the treatment plant.
Just as a side, Mr. Bartra and I did run this plan through, uh, Mr. Batta, and he is helping us with the two hundred thirty-sixth street project. Eventually in the future, he says that he doesn't see any impact, um, with anything we may be doing at two thirty-six, which is also a little concerning.
A big in the fight?
Uh, the force main, it'll be a force main and water line, water line will be sixteen inch, the force main will be twelve inch.
So when you cross two thirty-six, how are you doing that?
Uh, we'll be directionally drilling underneath it.
Okay.
So none of the roadway to be closed. I mean, we'll have equipment and pipe staged on the sides of the road.
Not open cut?
Uh, no, okay, I, I believe we, if we get close, I'd have to look at the locates out there, but I believe the water line up there is. Uh, passed right away, actually, or in the easement.
Any further questions?
At each and all.
Appreciate you coming.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't know if you want, need a vote or anything, since they're not gonna close the road, I'm more than happy to sign the permit, I was just more concerned with anything but shutting down Lamong, so. That's all I have for that one.
Thank you. Um, you might as well stay up here.
Okay.
Uh, building additional, building addition to street department facility.
So Mr. Bartra and I started talking, uh, probably two, three months ago. The council has been very gracious with, uh, purchasing some very good equipment for us, and, uh. In addition to maintaining that equipment, we need a place to store it so that we get the best lifetime out of it. So this is a project that Mr. Bartra and I have been talking about to. Put two new bays onto the end, um, south side of the street department building, so we did get three additional quotes, um. Mr. Bosma and I have had some discussions about this, one was from Precision Post-Frame LLC, one was from Graber Post-Building, Inc. And one was from FBI Buildings. Um, FBI Buildings was the lowest quote at, uh. Fifty-two, nine forty-six, but it only included the shell of the building, they didn't put a floor in it for me, that was not what I asked them to do, there was no electric, there was no garage doors. Um, it was virtually just some holes and, and a roof, uh, for whatever reason, they chose not to, um, put the rest of it. Uh, the next one up was Graber and its quote was. Yes, that's it, they, uh, did the complete quote, but they left out electrical, as did post, uh, frame, so we did an add, add-on, uh. On or out, September twenty-fifth. To this date, Graber has not responded back to my request for the electric, so their quote does not include electric. Uh, so the last quote was from. Post-Frame, I'm sorry, Precision Post-Frame, and it was all-inclusive, everything that we had asked them to do for eighty-five, five thirty. And, uh, so those are the three quotes, and I'm asking for permission to accept the Precision Post-Frame, they were the most responsive. And, uh, get this project underway.
Hey, I had something.
Yes.
I should have had this last one too, so one of the reasons we're doing a resolution on this, go through this process and you reject the lowest quote. You have to have written evidence of the reason for that, state the word accounts. They're pretty thorough on finding these and rooting them out, so. On the prior one, you, uh, declared. The low bid is non-responsive because it did not include the older pits, uh, equipment on this one. Uh, the resolution declares both Precision. Uh, I'm sorry, both, uh, FBI Buildings and West Buildings as non-responsive. So you're either responsive or you're not, it's not the most responsive, you're non-responsive and you can be rejected on that. Or you're responsive and you don't think the most responsive gets things the most, so they're either non-responsive or not responsible. Uh, so anyway, the resolution declares both of the, oh, two bids. That were incomplete is not responsive, and then awards the contractor, which is Precision Post-Frame. I do have contracts for both of those projects through signature.
What was the total amount again?
The total amount for Precision was.
Whatever one you wanted.
Yeah, eighty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars.
Was I right, Scott reading that, they could have this done before the snow flies?
I talked to, uh, Ryan a week ago, he, he said, once they start, he was looking two to four weeks, depending on, we have to go through the permitting process. Uh, once he gets started, he's talking about a couple of weeks.
I heard that takes a long time.
I, I know somebody over there, maybe that'll help.
Okay.
But we still have to go through the permitting process, once that gets done, then, uh. Four to six weeks, I would imagine, we might be done, so.
Any other? Comments? Go for it, Ron.
I move that we accept the quotes from which company again?
Uh, Precision Post-Frame LLC.
Precision.
Precision Post-Frame LLC.
Actually, move, move the adoption to twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one?
Two, twenty, twenty, yeah, twenty twenty-five dash. Two over, twenty, twenty. Yeah, twenty twenty-five dash twenty, move the adoption.
Dash twenty. I moved we adopt. Uh, twenty twenty-five dash twenty with Precision Post for this quote. Second.
And a motion and a second as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Keep us updated on how it goes.
Yes, sir. Um, did you? We have on the list uh, Main Street's lighting. Do you wanna do it next?
That was the last time I have on.
It's under general.
Uh, general discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, okay.
No, let's do it.
Uh, a couple of days ago, last week, I'm sorry, lose track of time. Uh. Ms. Neff and Ms. Kiefer reached out to me about putting some lights on the lamp post for Christmas holiday season. Uh, so they wanted to come to uh, council, make sure that they told you what their plan was. The most important thing to me on this was that they're they're gonna take responsibility for putting them up and taking them down and we don't have to do anything. So I was I was ecstatic. Uh, so they're both here and I invited them here to to. Tell everybody what their plans are for Christmas.
So you know that I love Christmas and I love the Christmas lights. So we wanted to add a little bit of. Um, additional Christmas feel. And initially Heidi and I were looking at heralding angels um, to put on the light poles, but. They were five feet, the smallest we could find were five feet. Um, and our poles aren't like other towns or cities, they're shorter. So. I found a company out east that makes a three-foot snowflake. Um. Commercially made, fabricated specifically. If we, you know, we get the approval to put these on the posts, um, we have to let this gentleman know immediately. Um, but I sent Scott a photo of of the light and our communication. His name is Tom, his name is Tom Brady, but not the not the Tom Brady that we all know. Um, he was very forthcoming in saying that he would talk to anybody in the town that had questions about it, talk to Scott. Um, the weight of each um. Snowflake, I think it's fifteen pounds. Yeah, fifteen pounds. Um, I asked him for um, all of the specs. He gave us all the specs. Again, the town wouldn't be responsible for putting them up, taking them down as of right now. Um. We have a company, we have bids out right now for putting up the Christmas lights. Um, putting the lights on the Christmas tree. Um, the event is scheduled. Our program is scheduled for twelve-six, so that's a Saturday. Um. But again, this is just something that. The town wouldn't have to, the only thing that we need approval is that we can use your posts to put these lights on. We already wrapped the lights. Around the poles, we just want this addition that will. Be on street side.
So you're gonna take your veterans banners down, right?
Correct.
Approximately when?
I would say the end of November. We're looking at the end of November. Or mid-November.
And then they'll be up until January?
Yeah, yeah.
Somewhere, okay.
Yeah, I I would say most likely. I mean, that is entirely, I've had it, well. I mean, that's entirely up to you. I personally think that looking at the Christmas tree and the lights on main is nice. That is also something that, you know, maybe two weeks into January.
That's fine.
And then take them down.
Mm-hmm, no problem.
But.
I'm okay as long as each snowflake is unique.
No. If that is the case, then the price goes up a lot. Did she? I see how that is.
So any, do we need to take action on this?
One quick.
Or just give a blessing?
Just one quick question, um, will your company take the banners down and put the banners back up? Or is that something you want us to do?
We we wanted to look for historical society because we wanna be very conscious and so I s- I spoke to Steve Martin. And we just figured we'd figure it out. Did you put them up?
Yeah.
Mr. Kirby?
Yeah, yeah, we don't have a problem.
Okay, I think he's more comfortable whoever put them up takes them down.
That's fine. I just wanna make sure it was clear. Happy to help you anyway we can. So we will, we will take them down, we'll get you, we can just take them back over to Mr. Stone. He stores up for us.
That's it.
And he gives me the thumbs up when he's ready for him to come back up. So you just tell me.
That'd be great.
Good. Thanks, Scott.
Do you have our blessing? Do whatever you want with.
Yes.
But thank you for coming up and and presenting. We appreciate that, know knowing what's going on. And, but yeah.
Hopefully it'll add a little bit more cheer to Main Street. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's all that I have. I just got an email from Andy Shirley. Just shortly before council meeting, I shared it with Mr. Betron, Mr. Higgins, Mr. Gifford uh, for their eyes. I don't recall the numbers off the top of my head. I don't think it was an increase over last year, but we're working through that process, so I just just literally got it. Um, just a quick update, uh, CCMG is in the process. I'm working with Bannings. They are going to have the data to me mid-October so that we can do that, that uh, application for the end of October. We're gonna ask for the million dollars. Uh, we're also working on the chip and seal. Project at the same time, and I believe Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bata. Said that there is an opening for a call for projects opening in November. For a potential uh, two hundred and thirty-sixth street.
That's correct. Uh. PMT, Mr. Bata, the year on the twenty-first, without making council on it, progress would be. Uh, conceptual designs at two hundred and thirty-sixth year upgraded, so. And Scott is correct. And I has put out, I noticed there will be a call for progress. Uh, as a me, you're necessarily gonna have to fill up the money in November. But apply and it takes a inordinate amount of time to get through that federal process, believe you. I can show out the issue of money. So if you're on the this side, you have to wait till the next.
Yeah, can I ask a question? Were you able to locate the policies that we were considering to try to find?
Yes, they've been submitted to NDOT. I got it. We we did the best we could with what we had and uh, we got a, we got an auto response back that NDOT received. Answer any questions about any of that? I'd be happy. Absolutely. Yes, sir. Happy to do it. Any questions from council? I'd be happy to answer.
No, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, discussion regarding employment offer for inspector position. Do you wanna start this one off?
I think, Ms. Bill, yeah.
Okay.
The executive session was very complex and. I wasn't present for it, so.
Floor is yours.
Uh, so we are looking to fill an inspector position. It was a position that was budgeted for this year. Is unique in its responsibilities and then it spans both traditional public works. Uh, inspections, but also building inspections. We have a candidate that we would like to extend an offer to. A couple of items that were an issue were uh, vacation time. Our employee manual presently. Um, does not offer any vacation time for a first-year employee. It only offers personal time off. Uh, additionally, the uh, individual had asked to be able to use a uh, take-home vehicle. We do have a vehicle in the planning and development department. Um, that we have been using exclusively for this past year. We have no issues allowing them to use it as a take-home vehicle. As as our community develops and we start to have um. More neighborhoods developing and growing, there is uh, the chance that there may be some overnight issues that they would have to respond to. Um, but primarily and initially, this would primarily be used for inspections.
So Eric, myself, Dave. And Michael Foot were at the executive session. I was able to discuss the executive session with Ron at a later date. Was not able to get Daniel to discuss with him. Um. So per our discussion. Go. Though I'd like to hear it from the rest of the council before I chime in on my thoughts.
I feel like the the take-home vehicle right off the bat, I mean, until we grow enough, I I don't think that it's needed. Um, it's not a public safety. Person that's gonna be responding after hours. Um, you know, I'm not saying that it couldn't happen as the town grows or the township grows. Um, you know, that that could be needed, but I think that that's. A be physically responsible right off the bat. Um. I've kinda went back and forth on the vacation stuff. I know Mr. Foot brought up, um. You know, kind of some. Time, time for time, if you spent, you know, twenty years at, you know, another municipality. If you come to Sheridan, we give you up to a certain amount of times. Um. You know, I I understand leaving another. Job to come here, you know, you don't really wanna take a cut. You wanna better yourself, because that's that's what you're wanting to do. Um, but I I feel like that I would wanna max that out probably. You know, whatever their timeframe is, up to five years, which would be ten days of vacation.
Mr. Henry.
Uh, my issue right now would be, I don't know, I don't see the need for it as much. As we need to address the uh, insurance. Who that we're facing through the fire department. Uh, homeowner's insurance is gonna rise significantly if we don't get something. Change. We need people. We gotta have people on staff to pass the requirements, correct, chief?
That's correct. I mean, one of the of that common land receiving ISO report, they just turned to have a recent had a. ISO rating for the town and there's something that be changed without that rating. And I only get two deepings over this evening on second and fourth available. So we are really happy to figure out some ways to christening fire department, even on top of the rate basis.
But I mean, faced with a new addition. Out west, a town, uh, new housing additions coming in and when their fire rating is gonna go from a four. To a possibly a ten, I think we need to address that first.
Just to be clear, the ISO rating also includes building department, so this individual would be working to address that.
Mr. Stone.
Well, I think I would need a much better description, a job description as to what uh. What the division of work would be with the people we have now compared to adding someone to it. Um. So I'd have to have a better good description of that before I could go and make a decision.
Uh, you wanna weigh in, Mr. Brad?
Uh, yeah, I I had a basic understanding of it after talking to uh. David a little bit about it. Um, yeah, take-home vehicle off the bat is a bit ridiculous, um, in my opinion. Um, the vacation. It's like uh, Councilor Gifford said, I mean, we could make, you know, like a five-year cap or whatnot, but I mean. If it, are we making a special exception just for this person? I mean, I I don't know that we shouldn't necessarily be doing that. And then. The same thing, I mean, do we really need it? I mean, we're about to, with SB one and everything, uh, deal with some. Financial constraints and uh, we got, in my opinion, bigger safety issues to deal with first.
Okay, um, I'm kinda lost here. Um, and maybe you can help me over here. I don't. You're concerned with the ISO rating. This is out of the. Planning budget, so this money doesn't funnel over to fire department at all. So it's it's money in a lane. So if if you wanna. Approve or not approve this position, it doesn't help the fire department's budget stance at all. Am I correct?
Well, it's all one thought in my mind. I think it's important to note that this position is currently funded in the budget. I think the the real issue of focus is whether you grant someone pay time off.
That's where I'm going next. I was just trying to set the narrative of of where the money was at currently. Um, according to our handbook, which we have discussed multiple meetings that we do need to aggressively update our handbook. We cannot give an offer. Of this magnitude and then I'm not maybe use that word loosely, because it doesn't follow our hand. Now, what we can do is decide we can set a precedent and that's what we're gonna build our handbook around. And I've been fully prepared to make a decision tonight that I do agree with Councilor. Councilman Foot's suggestion of, we cap it off at five years. So if you bring in an employee. They had twenty years at some some other municipality or another job, they're allowed to bring a five-year work service in. But cap it at that, if they brought, they had twenty, they come in with five. If they only had four, then they come in with four, but we cap it at five. So I guess the question in the executive session is, what does a five-year employee look at? And that's kind of the question that we left the meeting with. That we were hoping to come back to this meeting tonight to say, if you've been employed here for five years, what's your benefit package look like? So does anyone at this table have an idea of what a five-year employee looks like? Regardless if we approve, disap- you know, not approve a new hire, but. What what does a five-year employee look like? Because I think this would set the precedent of. Where we build our handbook from. And you and I were talking prior to the meeting and what number, oh, and the other thing, we have. Sick time, vacation time and personal time, is that what we have now? And I think all of that should be just rolled into personal time off. So we don't have three categories. Because it makes it a nightmare for payroll. Um, and I am, in my opinion. Four-hour increments. You can't take a half hour, you can't take an hour, you can take four hours or a full eight-hour day. Cut and dry, it's easy math, it's easy to figure. Um.
I think those suggestions were included in the script that I was reviewing of the policy.
Yeah. So I I guess at the end of the day. The salary, I don't feel this position is ready for a take-home vehicle. If it evolved into one after twelve months. I think if the person's hired, you come to us and say, hey, look, we've had to check this vehicle out twelve times this year because they did this. I think that's reasonable to come back and say, we ought to revisit this. But to come out of the hole, I I don't agree with that.
Okay.
But not to say that I wouldn't change my mind depending on how it's used. So what I'm looking for today to make my decision is what does a five-year employee look like on PTO? And it's it's not. You're gonna go like eight pages to do the math. Um, so after four years, it's.
Ten days.
Ten, ten days vacation. How many sick days?
That's based on your pay, isn't it? This is, it's a sick time earned per hour. Oh, fair enough. Okay.
Consider those separate.
Yes. How many?
Six. Five personal days.
Okay, so for five years, twenty days.
Sure.
That I mean, round number.
Yep.
Five years, you would bring in twenty days. Does every everyone following that method?
The the other request was that man is pretty specific about the first ninety days, no pay time along.
Correct.
Um, so I I suggested that this was being talked about, but his first time. Plan.
Correct.
So no problem, you can have a vacation unpaid and straight up leave during that ninety day period.
Correct.
But.
And just, just so we're clear, when we do that, that also means he's not paid for the holiday. Just, just so we're all on the same page.
Mm-hmm. I don't think there would have been any way by the handbook. That's not above and beyond and. Ninety days is a standard probationary period and I don't think most companies pay, holiday pay on week one, if you're inside your ninety days, so. My opinion is ninety. My opinion is ninety day probationary period is exactly that, you don't have any time if they want to. Come into an interview process and say, I already have this scheduled. Then they acknowledged it prior to an offer. It's a workaround, but they don't get paid for, and everybody's happy that we agreed to get the time off. If everybody's happy with that, it's okay. My opinion, um. Moving forward. So we can start the handbook process, five years, a five year employee gets twenty PTO days.
With your ninety day.
At a manager level.
With the ninety day window.
With a ninety day uh, probationary period.
What I would. So this particular position. My recommendation, I ask the council. Mister Pedro, Mister Bosma's partner has done a considerable amount of work on the overhaul recommendations to the existing name. Uh, it is in great need in our. Uh, to bring it into the twenty first century to. Our work environment in a town, you're trying to track hands. So what I would ask the council. Two of these three more than three. To work with me, I work with the department as use Mister Pedro's input, input to the department as if uh, have already offered. Can come with, come up with a manual that you as policymakers and purgers are comfortable with. Where we are and where you are wanting to go as it relates to your human resources. And bring that to the whole council for your consideration approval early.
I I agree with that statement, but that doesn't help us for today.
Do you purpose nicely, knowing the trajectory of where you're likely to go?
Yes.
And I would suggest look two things, one, one policy manual. I would like that Joe, I mean, give a. This a roundtable discussion. So with whoever your people are.
So I know in an executive session, we we fire and police are separate. They they should have their own each independent handbook. When you get to the rest of the departments. We should have a classification for hourly. And salary be broken down to a director, the supervisor, manager, director level. That way, there may be differences, there may not be. But definitely have those provisions in place, and you said this person would be at a manager level.
Yes.
So we have that. Nomenclature. That we're establishing potentially a policy here.
Those definitions are informed by by literature. And, you know, in some. Those things will already be solved based upon the job.
So. Ignore the Jennifer's up there, and we're just talking about a five year employee for it. At a manager level, that's. Exempt.
Depends on what the doctors.
Exempt.
This position is.
Two key functions that I would make is add, a magistrate patrol and this uh, for board. So I don't know if this particular area. Have those two functions.
So from a legal standpoint, would this be an exempt position?
I wasn't prepared against that question tonight, I think it is. In any event, if you're going to move forward, I would suggest that because we're. So nuanced here that there's formal employment wire.
Well, I'm right now, I'm just trying to get the council to agree to a five year employee, and then if we can agree to what one will look like. I think then we move on to her candidate.
Look, if I may just add a little more bottom to your your thought. In the public safety world. Lateral moves have come. Chiefs are finding this, paying, attracting. This lateral move, if you were over here at this agency for X money, or you bring that with you, certainly, certainly will take. Consider doing that same thing, let's, as an example, if. Jen or Scott. Do have an open position to attract a five year street supervisor or laborer from another neighboring community. That's not a managerial position, that's five years of experience in that particular. Maybe you 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 want it into that, that. This particular candidate we discussed. Are discussing. Is in the specter of ten plus years?
Yes.
So in his, his or her particular. Coming into that job. Kind of that help that exists in my. So ten years, not twenty years.
Correct, but we were talking, that was just an example, it was a twenty year person. We were camp in our executive session. We were trying to figure out how to five, ten years you could bring over and most companies cap it at five. So there is a give and take for leaving a business. A company to move on. But someone shouldn't have to start over as a rookie with some years. Served. So do does anyone just? The picture of a five year employee manager here. Twenty PTO days, ninety day. Probation period. Is there anything that we're missing there?
I think the thing has helped you at this point, is there any find this?
So we have a scope now, I feel for. Someone that has at least five years' experience or here.
And are they immediately eligible for benefits?
After the ninety day probation, ninety days is ninety days, there's nothing in that ninety day period.
Without insurance. Well, yeah, I think it's thirty day, right?
First in month, all of the thirty days.
So your ninety day.
That's set by the insurance company.
Paytime off. Just patient any. Per comp and the up the turn dental. Is whatever the carrier's position.
There's somebody invited to the weekly luncheons. I'm still waiting on my invite.
The salary ordinance already includes this position. Well, I'm on the salary.
So if we could. The job description, so we know.
So we're good on the position type setting? That's, I don't know how to describe it. Okay. So now let's discuss. What is the job description, what duties would this person that you would like to hire be doing?
Uh, so this will be a shared position with our public works department, they will um, perform. Duties that you would normally see under public works, uh, such as stormwater inspections, they will do proof rolls. Uh, they will also assist with the encroachment permit inspections. And then on the building side, they would be available Monday through Friday to answer building inspection calls. Um, and po- possibly start doing and and um, as they become trained handling building inspections.
So currently, we're CCMG. On the road paving. We're hiring Banning to. Play the role as an inspector. To follow behind the professionals that are supposed to be doing the correct job. But we have to do checks and balances. How much are we currently paying per project banning? Because it was per project, it wasn't an annual fee, correct?
It is, it was out, it needs an hourly engagement and then we. Our. He scheduled the conflicts covering them plus some on top of that.
So I thought it was around thirty thousand.
That number's sticking in my head.
So would this position replace the need? To pay Banning thirty thousand?
Yes.
So there's a.
And what are their expecting services for?
Banning's. Um, the litigation, to avoid the litigation that we're currently in. That's the best way I can describe it. Because we didn't have one previously, so obviously we're litigating or sitting and waiting. But so you take that off, I mean, we're saving money there, paying more for an inspector, um. I, someone else talk because I feel like I'm the only one up here talking.
Are we? Are we growing that fast that? I I don't know, it just concerns me, we're going to hire a full time person. Are we going, are they really going to have enough? Work to justify. The cost that we're talking, I mean, we're talking close to a hundred thousand dollars. And we pay all the uh, benefits and everything.
Mister President, may I? Just as a side note, I just want to note, Jennifer and I have talked about this for six months, it would take. Year to date. I've done eighteen hundred encroachment permits for the town of Sheridan, it's eighteen hundred. I'm just just signing off on them, some of them are large projects, but what we're not doing. Is we're not getting those inspected, I just don't have enough time to go and do eighteen hundred inspections, so. I just wanted to add that to to Mister Stone's. Discussion point, I know if anybody could help me with eighteen hundred. Year to date, encroachment permits, I certainly would would need that help, how how we do that, I don't know, but. Those encroachment permits are not getting inspected. There's not enough time, so anyway, I just wanted to to offer that for Mister Stone's.
And additionally, uh, this is. This position I. Is infrastructure focused, some sidewalks, streets, long sewers. Also contemplated if they evolve into storm water management.
Correct, um, Sheridan, because of its rate of growth, as Mister Higgins highlighted earlier this this uh, this evening. With our rate of growth, I Dem is going to require us to become our own MS four. Uh, to do that, we have to have certain things in place, and this position, this role. Would be to set us up so that we can transition into becoming our own MS four. It requires things like, um. Monitoring our storm storm water system. Uh, inspecting the storm water system, monitoring the storm water system, identifying when repairs are needed. Um, and then proactively managing the system through the O and M manuals.
With. It's maybe a stupid question, but I want to ask you. Would this cover? Some of the issues around town where people put a couch out in their front yard and they leave it sit there for two or three weeks and. And sometimes longer, I'm I'm curious.
No, it does not deal with couches, couches are a code enforcement issue, and when those are identified, our code enforcement in person. Goes out and specs, sends a letter, and we have to give them a certain amount of time to address that, so that's why they appear to sit there for two to three weeks.
Good, thanks.
Mister Bosma. Well, no, what what's our next step here, that's what I'm looking for.
So first of all, I want to clarify that what you're considering is not a new take on.
Correct.
So if you want to approve the hiring of this individual subject to. Uh. An acceptable employment letter. If that would probably be the next step.
I I have a question. Does, since this is, she is. Mrs. Miller is a director, does she have the authority to hire someone in her department? Does the council have to approve her hire? We just kind of approved the guidelines for the position. But do we actually have to act on the hire of this position? Since it's budgeted?
Well, I would, I would say customarily, no. But because you are making some special exceptions to.
Okay.
Her policies, I would think it would be appropriate to. To approve.
Because if these policies were in place, we wouldn't be talking about. Okay. Is there a motion to be entertained?
I'll make a motion. That we extend an offer. With exception, uh, the take home vehicle and max of twenty days PTO, is that, am I staying next?
Everything that we agreed on, he's got it written down.
Okay. No, I need to, okay.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? And we have a motion and a second as presented, I'd like a roll call though.
Yes.
David King, Dave?
No.
Side of any?
Yes. Yes.
Daniel Brad?
Yes.
Thank you.
Prepare a letter from Jennifer's signature.
I already have a draft that I can send you.
Any other? General discussion item? Well, Mister Kirby did that to us because he was at the podium, so we'll jump back up to reports.
So we've been blocking that, and you guys have a lot of moments, so we're just trying to base uh, on the mediation. We have deployed some. Uh, few key meetings are trying to come to a thought analysis, thankfully through one of the. Uh, five major agencies that we've worked with, just giving, wanting to give us an assessment, so. Have a better understanding of what reasonable settlement range is. Uh, I'd also like to announce that this is Mister Nicely's last meeting. As a single man. We rely on him too much, we rely on him too much, so he's not leaving. So he is taking, uh, after Saturday festivities, he will be taking one week to tours southern California. Fruit crops. So I wanted to just bring that to your attention.
She is welcome to attend. Okay, well, she's watching, right? Congratulations. Is that all yours for?
Yes.
Good, uh, Mister Higgins, or is there anything else you want to add?
Yes.
Thank you. We will go to. Public comment. It's been a long meeting. Yes, ma'am. If you can speak really loud.
Apologize for. Speaking when I normally wasn't supposed to, even I didn't mean that I didn't understand a single thing you said. I guess this is my shit, so I apologize, I didn't.
We don't do everything right either. We appreciate the comment. I've been here twelve years doing this, I'm finally starting to understand, so. Though you're you're. Totally fine. All right, seeing none, I will move on, Dan, she had her chance, but I'm moving on, I'm tired. Action to pay accounts payable.
I'll make the most of my paid accounts payable. Second.
A motion second, as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passants. Standing by council president, I want to thank the events committee for. Their efforts in the Harvest Moon, I was unable to make it up there, but I heard there were some really good reviews from it. Um, hopefully I get some more feedback or maybe. Hope maybe they did a counter, maybe there's somebody to find out how many people actually attended. Um, I don't have a lot of information, but according to. Our safety services, I don't believe there were any major issues. Other than it might have been the world's largest beer garden. That's the only thing I know of, right? And the hardware benefited from needing more rope. Fire sale on rope. One thing, um, I I do want to congratulate again, uh. Chief Stern on his. Grant money and the efforts. Grant money and the efforts and putting together. The vision to start looking for a fire station, a new new location. So. Keep up the good work and hopefully Mr. Higgins didn't itch too hard on your your money there. We did a, well, we didn't. Jennifer Miller set up a kind of a. If informative cop plan meeting at the Ekin Lodge several weeks ago. And I think that that meeting was well attended. I was there and it kind of turned into a. Town hall meeting versus a cop plan meeting. There's a lot of people up in the township area that don't come to these meetings that have no clue what's going on. So I've talked to, I sent an email out to council. Kind of start doing. Quarterly or every eight week meetings up at Ekin Lodge. And it won't be a an official meeting. There'll only be three to four council members, the three three members. Dave, Ron and myself will be doing the first one and it's just a fireside chat. Town hall meeting. We'll have a couple items to discuss, but it's really the spectators, the attendees get to take over the meeting and ask questions. Just to kind of inform them and include them on what is going on since they are now part of the town of Sheridan. And you've got that set up for next Wednesday.
And I have some flyers. I'll pass them out here in a few minutes.
So we're going to. Add question them on how often they would like to see that happen up there. And kind of go from there and we'll rotate hot seats of the council. But is it six PM?
Yes, come at six for coffee. Meeting will start at six thirty.
So Ekin Lodge next Wednesday, we do have a. Comprehensive plan. What is it, Jennifer, tomorrow?
Yes.
Six o'clock in here?
Yes.
Plan commission was canceled this week, but BZA does have a meeting. Um, park board is October twenty second, RDC is October twenty eighth. And. Okay. Next, next Thursday, um, BZA Thursday, October sixteenth. Okay, at five thirty. And that is it. Do we want? Do you want to mention anything about the non on or next meeting? Oh, and the ribbon cutting at the Melon was very well attended.
Yeah.
Grand opening of phase two.
Really nice crowd.
A nice crowd. A special thank you to Michelle Junkins for setting up the festivities that day. With the purchase of the tent, the microphone. The cookies banning for bringing the the coffee.
It was it was nice.
It was.
To see Judy Hagan right there. His mother's been very. You know, and all we had yesterday, the shares, the folks up there, the folks up there are really moving along.
Good. Mayor Brainerd was guest speaker, keynote speaker. It was very well attended. So we have a lot going on and I'm sorry if I missed anybody. Try catch them next meeting, but. And the final, the shout out to the perks board for putting that together on a quick notice and. There's more to come. I'll be with you guys at the next meeting and. We'll start planning the next next project. One final thing, did you get a resignation letter from anybody on RDC?
No.
Okay. What's up? All right, Ron, good on the.
Many of you remember the house they tore down at thirty one, two thirty six on the Jackson Township side. It was the historic. Underground Railroad House. Well, that house was taken apart and everybody has asked what happened to it. Well, I'll tell you what happened to it. It's located on the farm just north of Ekin. We're having an open house there on. Uh, October twenty first at four o'clock. So you'll still be able to get back in town for the board meeting here. But. Uh, the if you knew where KNS Tree Farm is located, that's where it is. They've rebuilt that house there. And if you're interested, come join us, the Historical Society, and we're going to have a little program there.
Thank you. Entertained motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Be careful at home. Give us a few.